Okay, good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the work session for the Board of Commissioners for November 7th, 2011. Commissioner White is out of town today, so it might not last as long. I don't know, he doesn't usually say that much. Let's see, you have in front of you the agenda, and I'd like to... Is there any questions about the items on the agenda at this point? Or can we go ahead and proceed as far as our meeting today?
I'm ready to go.
Did everybody have a chance to look? There were a few corrections, we'll make sure everybody had a chance to look at them. Okay, let's see, let's look at the... Sorry, I'm not used to using this to where it's projected on the screen instead of me getting to...
I thought they had a smart boards on all the school system.
Yeah, it's smart boards I can handle, but I forget that I can't look around on the agenda, and I have to keep it so that it's projected correctly. So, okay, we have, on the agenda, we have recognitions and presentations, and we also have the consent agenda items. Are there anything of those, either of those items that need to be discussed? If not, I would accept a motion to place those on the agenda for our regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all in favor of placing the recognitions presentations and the consent agenda on the meeting. Let's see, we got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, let's look at old business. We have the updates on the qualified school construction bonds, and, there we go. We have Will Crabtree here from Kannapolis City Schools to give us an update.
Good afternoon. Just want to give you an update on the qualified school construction bonds. Not a lot's gone on since my last update, but I do have a few things to report. We are currently actively working on the roof replacement at Kannapolis Intermediate School, and we have run into a few opportunities in the design of that, so it looks like we won't be bidding that project until, more than likely, around the March 2012 timeframe, which should put us in a good period of, over the summer, to work on that when the kids aren't here. So, I'm not that disappointed about that, it's probably actually working out pretty good. Actively working with the mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineer. We're probably two to three weeks away from being able to bid a job at AL Brown, so besides about that. And we're also working with the civil engineers to develop plans for the parking lots, one at AL Brown High School, one at Forest Park Elementary School. So, that's where we're at right now. Like I said, not a lot different from last time, but I'll open up in case anybody has any questions.
Are there any questions on the Kannapolis projects? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate you keeping us updated. And we also have Lynn Whitkey with Cabarrus County Schools to give us an update.
In the nick of time. Madam Chair, sorry. What, Sonny Cut is passing out for me is an update on the project schedule, what we call milestones for the projects. And where we're at at the moment is we are in the process of design and bidding, a lot of work. And I don't think your, the report, the other report, which is the financial report for us, is probably lagging about two weeks behind. So what you'll see in the financial piece is pretty much just a status quo up through, I believe this, yes, it was printed the first of November. And what is not reflected is we just bid three projects, all of which were successfully bid. They were the Mount Pleasant Middle School's IT project, the roof replacement work, HAN Freeze, and the, actually, two projects at Central Center, Central High School, which was the window and door replacement project, that was a large one, and the security improvements to the administrative space. So those projects are not reflected, they should be shown properly on the, as far as bidding dates, on the milestone project, which is the one with the blue stripe going across the top. That's what I'm referring to when I say milestone. And so, so far, things are going well. As I said, all three of those projects were within budget, and that's a good thing. So we hope that continues for some time to come. And we are bidding a number of projects in November and December, and we will continue to update you as we get that information.
Are there any questions on the Cabarrus County Schools projects?
On the flip side of the sheet, Northwest Cabarrus High, the practice athletic fields, it says pending fund determination, I guess that will be decided once projects are completed, and how much money will be left, is that...
That is correct. As you may recall, Mr. Meister, we ran into some higher bids early on, and as a result, we decided to prioritize the list of projects and set a group of projects sort of off to the side to await the bidding of the top tiers of work. So we're in the process of that. As I said, if we continue on our current role, things are looking better, and we are beginning to see some savings. So we're hopeful that we will begin to pick up some of these other projects that are, in effect, below the line at this point or on hold.
Any other questions? I just want to make a comment on the gymnasium at Northwest.
Yes ma'am.
I had a call from a parent, and I don't know how much information is out there, really, because I didn't want to say too much, because I wasn't real certain how much, you know, information is out about that particular project. But I did have a call from a parent on that project, kind of a concern that it's done right. I'm not exactly certain what they meant by it, because I'm not 100% familiar with the scope of work that you have for that gym. I mean, I think anybody that's been to that gym understands that for a high school in the county, that's the worst gym that there is. I mean, it's not really functional. So, do you feel like you have the funds to do that project the way that it should be done? Or, I guess that was kind of the implication I got, was that they were concerned that what's going to be done on that project isn't enough. Does that make sense?
It does. We're currently looking at a number of designs. I will say at this point, our budget does not allow us to do, to change, and I don't know if everyone's familiar with it, but currently, the gym floor is at one level, and then the seating sort of raises up on the sides and goes up. So the base seating is not at the same level as the gym floor. And I suspect that's what the parent might be speaking of. Our current designs don't change that. They add in addition to the end of the building to increase seating capacity, which was sort of the number one goal, was to increase the number of seats available. And we're doing that. To change the seating and bring it all down to the gym level is possible, but it means more construction, more dollars, and at this point in time, we're not funded to do that. We are looking at options, but I'm not sure that we're going to be able to achieve that.
Does the scope of work also, for this project, does it take in, doing something with the locker room areas?
Yes.
Because the locker room areas, for anybody that doesn't know, are underneath that seating area, that's the reason the seats are higher, is to give...
Lockspace, yes.
Basement space, I guess, for the locker rooms.
Yes.
And so, I didn't know if that was being addressed in this project or not.
It is. Under the current plan, it would renovate those locker rooms, make them ADA accessible, actually make the whole building ADA accessible, and improve the quality of finishes and things that are in the current locker room spaces for both boys and girls.
Do you have any idea at what point in time a decision will be made that projects can't be done, or which projects will be eliminated? You gave us a different sheet that kind of had a line drawn on it that you thought, at least at that time, you know, even below the line, there was a chance they wouldn't get funded. And I know you have them here, the one you just gave, it says, "Designed to be determined." So I know those are, some of those are the same project. Any idea on when the school board will have to make a decision on which projects will be funded?
I would think probably by, probably by the end of next summer, because at that point, we're, we have a three-year window of opportunity to get these done. So we have an effect until April, I think, June of, April of 2014, right. So by the end of next summer, we really start, at that point, to really need to make a determination, are we going to go forward with which projects, so that we allow us enough time to finalize the design, bid them, and construct them properly, so...
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, under new business, if you will. Item number one is, let's see, Jonathan Marshall. Do this one, North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission Grant.
Good afternoon. Just to give you a little background, this is a grant from the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission that has been awarded to, essentially to Piedmont Farmers Market. Our Cooperative Extension Department has been working with them on an expansion of their main Piedmont Farmers Market off of Wyancoff, and this particular grant is intended to help with parking and site work to allow a new building to be constructed there, for various reasons, and I'd be glad to get into as much detail as you like. This particular grant needs to come through the county, so we are being asked to administer the $75,000 that was awarded to the county. There is in addition to this a Cannon Foundation Grant that Cooperative Extension and Piedmont Farmers Market are pursuing. The grant from the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund would not come through unless that Cannon Foundation Grant is also awarded. So the first stipulation of the contract is we must also get the Cannon Foundation Grant, or the Farmers Market must. And then they'll also be using their own funds to help with this project. So the only portion of that, however, that the county would be required to administer, help administer, is this $75,000 Tobacco Trust Fund Grant. So we're asking you to accept the grant award, and then ultimately to approve the related budget amendment and project ordinance that go with that.
Okay, any questions?
What's the Cannon Trust going, how much are they going to put in there?
They've requested $75,000 from them also.
Can you touch on the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund? Just so everyone is aware of where that money's coming from, what it is.
That's, it is a fund that's administered by the state. However, that is monies that have come in or resulted from a settlement with the tobacco companies. The intention was that the tobacco companies then paid the settlement to the larger tobacco states, and it is monies intended to offset, as tobacco production goes away, to offset the losses or the negative issues that that has caused. So in counties where you had some, had a tobacco economy, which of course we did with the Philip Morris Plant, these monies are intended to help offset that by supporting other industries or other jobs related to agriculture and farming. In this case, you know, it's an outlet, it's a direct beneficiary, because it's an outlet that supports the farmers and land users of this county.
Is the reason for the Cannon Foundation Grant, is that, does this Tobacco Trust Fund require a match? And that's where they're looking for the match? Or if it's, or is it because the scope of work is 150,000, not 75,000, so therefore, that's the reason they're tied together?
They're tied together because of the scope of work, and it's actually greater than that. The Piedmont Farmers Market will be using some of their own funds in addition to that, so it's greater than 150,000 for the site work and new building to be constructed. But yes, by itself, this money would not, it would only fund those improvements to parking and site work, without that building, then it doesn't meet the overall objectives of the Tobacco Trust Fund.
Any other questions?
How much roughly do you think is the Piedmont Farmers Market putting in of their own funds? Just curiosity.
Roughly $100,000. They estimate that the total project is about $250,000.
Okay, do I have a motion to place this on the agenda? And do you want it under consent, or do you want it under new business?
I move it under consent.
I move it put on a new business.
New business, okay. I'll second new business then.
Okay, so I have a motion and second to place it under new business. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
New business. Okay, Jonathan Phillip. We have an update on Raging Ridge Road Extension.
There is a map included with your agenda. If you'd like to go to that, actually, and I can provide some of the update by showing you where we are on this map. See how well this pointer works. This is, the Raging Ridge Road Extension includes a bridge. This is the main access road to both Hickory Ridge Middle School and Hickory Ridge High School, and the single access to those two schools. When the school sites were designed, the intention was that ultimately this road would be extended to Stallings Road to provide a secondary ingress egress for this school. It does require a stream crossing over Back Creek, which is why it is a little bit complicated. We've been working with the Town of Harrisburg, the school system, and North Carolina DOT on this project as a joint project. At this point, the funding would be shared by North Carolina DOT. The Division Office has identified some funding that they have locally and control locally. In addition, there's some contingency funds that have been requested from the state. This board took action, as well as the school board, to request those, and it appears that we will get those contingency funds. Right now, the remainder of the funding would come from Cabarrus County, although we do have, have been working with the Town of Harrisburg and would be interested in them participating in the project. And the board has expressed in the past that you would like for them to participate in the project. The two schools are not on here, but just off the map is the middle school and the high school. This is the football field, which lies behind the high school. Currently, there's a three-lane road that runs to the main entrance of the high school parking lots, and it drops to two lanes and runs back to where the football field access is. But at that point, it ends, although there was some grading for that. At that point, that is as far as we needed access in the construction of the school. So we'd pick up that two-lane section and extend two-lane roadway to Stallings Road. The last time I updated the board on this, we intended to, engineers had looked at a shorter span over Back Creek. It was more of a precast culvert that could be put in place. It did have a slightly lower cost. However, we've gone in and done some geotechnical work in the stream itself and found that there isn't bedrock close enough to support that type of construction. So currently, what's proposed is a concrete core slab bridge, about 70 feet long and 39 feet wide. If you've been to Hickory Ridge Middle School, you'll note that just north of the school, on Hickory Ridge, the bridge over Back Creek was recently replaced by North Carolina DOT. The proposed construction for this location is almost exactly like what was done there. So if you look at that bridge, you're seeing almost exactly what we would propose to do here. Once it extends across, it would widen out to three lanes to allow turn lanes onto Stallings Road, and construction would have to also include turn lanes, a right turn lane as you're approaching from the west, and then a left turn lane as you're coming from the east to access that road. There are really only two property owners involved. Cabarrus County is the owner of the school sites, and then one property owner on the other side of the creek. The schools had facilitated a discussion with her, and then ultimately Lynn Whitkey and I have met with her, as well as Town of Harrisburg officials. She has some development plans. She has developed part of her property and has development plans for the remainder of her property. So we're working with her on the possibility of a sewer extension in lieu of purchasing right-of-way. And she does seem amenable to working with us on this road project. Again, we've met most recently with DOT just last Friday, as we're working through some of the issues on what point DOT will pick this up. If the project moves forward and the board ultimately approves the funding for it, then at some point, we would turn, we would complete the engineering, the county would complete the engineering up to a point, and then it would be turned over to DOT for bidding and construction oversight. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any idea of a timeline that you think this will move forward?
In looking at it, we feel like the engineering could be completed by January to February of this, of next year, and then it would go to bid sometime late spring, and look at construction then commencing either in the summer or fall of 2012.
Questions?
I remember last time, whenever you presented this, there was a discussion about the floodplain. And I know you touched on the smaller bridge, and I presume that the larger bridge will have to be installed. Is that still an issue with the floodplain, or...
Either way, we, because there is a floodplain and we do affect the stream and the amount of water passing down the stream in a flood event, there's something called a certificate of, a conditional letter of map provision, CLOMER, that we have to file an application for. That did not change between the two bridge structures. We still have to file that, and it has to be approved. There were some changes to the calculations. We have to certify that there be less than a one-foot rise in floodwaters on the upstream side, which is going back towards Harrisburg, so in this area, that the bridge will cause less than a one-foot rise in the floods, and all calculations show that it actually would be closer to a third of a foot at the most. But we have been able to move forward with that. We weren't able to submit the final application until we determined the exact bridge type, and once we had done the soil borings, determined we needed to do the 70-foot concrete core slab, we were able to complete that application.
So what is the total cost on this project?
Right now, the approximate, and this is an estimate including right-of-way construction, there's actually a water line that Harrisburg will require that we extend from a point of terminus to tie in with their water line on Stallings Road. The bridge and everything is about 1.4 million. Now that does include a 10% contingency also. That is, that is all-inclusive. We're refining some of those after our discussions on Friday with DOT. I think some of those costs may actually drop a little bit based on some engineering work that DOT felt they could do.
So how could the Town of Harrisburg help participate in this project as far as the water lines, and is there some discussions there of how they can participate in this?
I really appreciate that question. Yes, we would, we believe that participating in the water line construction would help. In addition, Harrisburg's ordinances require that this be a three-lane road for the length of the road, all the way across the bridge and tying in. We would prefer the two-lane road. There really isn't any reason for the third lane. The third lane is a turn, turn lane, which makes more sense at the middle school and high school, because you have so much turning traffic. At this point, there will be no turning traffic in that section of road until you get up to Stallings, in which case we'll be widening it. In addition, they require sidewalks on both sides of the road. And once again, there really isn't, the, any pedestrian traffic going across the bridge would most likely be on the high school side, so we would just want to extend one sidewalk, because that's really, the area they'd be accessing is all on the high school side, up to a point that we have two sidewalks already. So we'll be going back before their town council and possibly their Board of Adjustment and asking for exceptions to those roads. One way they could participate is by allowing us to do just the two lanes instead of three lanes, which drops the cost of our project.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be critical to try to get their participation in that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. As you proceed, of course, I'm sure you'll come back and keep us updated. I appreciate it.
I will. As we finalize those budget numbers, I'll be getting back to you.
Yeah, I'm sure you will on that. And I'd ask that you share this with, Mr. Whitkey's already left, but with the Cabarrus County Board of Education, so that they know how this is moving along. Thank you. Okay, that was, there's no action for us to take on that item. That was just for our information. The next item, G3, is, Kelly, there you are. Kelly Sifford is here concerning the weatherization program funding. I think this came about as a result of Commissioner Carruth's comments maybe at the last minute.
That's correct. We brought that back for discussion. Again, it would be, if approved, put toward weatherization of the remaining people on the waiting list. We did print out a list with a as-of date, because people are coming in every day. So we have a list that, of people that would be eligible if funded under this from, I think it was around October 30th. Are there any questions?
Yeah, just a couple, if I could. You know, one of the things, I think, back when we had the discussion, you know, one of the big things was, I think, Mr. Burge and I were talking about, was the fact that we were using federal money, of which we're borrowing half of it, you know. The other thing was, was the, you know, I've thought about two, was with that money came some strings that would actually, by having to meet the mandates of the federal grant, it would actually, it wouldn't be $75,000, it would be something less than that. And then, you know, so, and I think, and I mentioned the fact of using churches or nonprofits, that we're willing to step up the plate. And I've got plenty of feedback from those folks, that a lot of them are more strapped than county is to do these kind of things. But my question, I guess, is, is that what, do we know, kind of, can you give us a, and you may not have it today, it may be something we need for our meeting, but what are, what were some of the things that we were required to do in receiving the money from the federal government?
One of the things that has gotten very complicated and is causing a lot of complications in the program is they have adopted regulations known as ASHRAE 62.2 for ventilation. So for almost every unit we're doing now, we have to install an exhaust fan in the kitchen that is 122 CFMs, which meaning, that is how much air it pulls out, and it has to be less than six zones of noise. We have to install an exhaust fan in each bathroom that has a shower that has at least 50 CFMs and less than one zone. The products are a little bit difficult to find. Very few people carry them, although everybody's working on developing those products now. But it has to be vented to the exterior of the home. So we're spending a lot of time venting, venting outside of the home. Now, in some cases, this does definitely need to be done, but in some cases, I believe it to be a little bit overkill. But the reason that the ASHRAE 62.2 calls that as a requirement is because the whole calculation that you use to determine how much air should be brought into that home assumes that you have those two items in your home. This is something that North, the state of North Carolina has been discussing with DOE. Apparently, these exhaust fans are more common in other parts of the country. Here, almost nobody has them, because we have humidity outside and inside. So there's not as much of a need, I guess, or it's not been a traditional product that's in our homes in the way that they are requiring. So even when we get there, and it may even have a fan that meets the standards, nine times out of 10, we're having to exhaust it. It's not exhausted out.
And this is in addition to the weatherization?
Right. It is, it's an expensive part of the weatherization. The official regulations changed July 1st, and they, the state had me produce some numbers on how much, because this is out of the health and safety portion of the budget. And they give you 15% for health and safety. Currently, we're running 24% to 25%, and most of it is because of the ventilation. They are also requiring vapor barriers, which in some cases is getting expensive. It doesn't seem like it would, but it is to. But the ventilation's really what's killing us.
What are the vapor barriers have to be put in?
The black plastic that you put under your home to separate moisture from the home.
Yeah.
What's the difference in using federal funds and using county funds? You don't go by the same standards?
Well, if we totally fund each house, it would pull it out of the federal program, and it would be our program, and it would not be reviewed by the state. We do have an opportunity, because as I said, we're running out of the health and safety portion because of what they're requiring, to leverage out what little bit is left of the original ARA grant. We could do it that way, although those homes would be reviewed by the state, because there would be state money in it too. But we can do it either way. We could probably serve more homes if we leverage out the rest of that money. But it's kind of a, you don't know till you get there, because each house is so different.
But what we're doing is, I guess, you may be picturing words in your mouth, but... But what we're doing is, I guess, you may be picturing words in your mouth, but what you're saying is, is that there's things that we may not have to do because if we use local money versus we're required to use, if we had the ARA money.
Yeah, if, if I were choosing to do the program the way that I would, the way we had done it in the past was the only time you would put in an exhaust fan in the kitchen, for example, was if they had a gas stove. And which I think we probably want to continue with that just for safety purposes.
Because we make the decision locally about what we want to do as far as.
Yeah, if we, we could take it completely out of their purview. And that was one of the things that I talked to them about, how to pull it completely out because everything's tied to the software right now. But basically, we would set them up in the system and say that, call them an other, whereas we have completed, walk away, denied, or whatever, we would have other. And we would put in the notes that we handled it with private funds.
Well, has somebody donated to county $75,000? Or this tax money?
The, the $75,000 is proposed to be a budget amendment to come out of the board's contingency.
It's tax dollars?
Yes, sir.
I've unvoted against it once. I honestly don't need to bring it back up.
I've got a question. Whenever an individual contacts the county to, to be a client of this program, the contractor, I guess there's contractors that go out to the homes to see what needs to be, how is that? Can you walk me through the process?
We have, once the client's qualified income-wise, there's basically two forms of qualification in this program. You can be qualified by income, but your home, for some reason, could disqualify you. We send, at once they are income-qualified, we send our auditors out to examine the homes. Those would be county employees. They examine the home, do the energy audit, do the work write-up. Currently, we send those out to the contractor to do the work, and then we go back and inspect the work to make sure that it was done as required, that the billing's correct, all of those factors, and pay the contractor. In the past, our own staff did it, and in the future, that's what will happen again. We will go back to our staff doing the work. Obviously, when we got the extra money, the demand was way too much for just the two staff people that we had, so.
So whenever the auditor makes a list of repairs that needs to be done, the contractor only performs those duties. There's never a situation where the contractor comes back and says, you know, X, Y, Z in addition needs to be done. Does that happen frequently? How often does that happen?
Less than 50% of the time. I mean, obviously, anytime you start cutting into floors, you find things maybe that you didn't expect. We try not to, you know, do that, but obviously, sometimes you have to when there's weak floors or holes in floors. You have to cut out a certain amount of area to get it fixed. Typically, if that happens, what they do is call us and say, we need a plumber, we found a leak. So, you know, we inspect under the homes, but sometimes you don't catch it because there's enough insulation that's catching it, that they didn't see it or, but they have to get it approved before they do it. They call us and say, we found this condition.
Because I have heard of a number of situations where there was just a few things that were going to be repaired or updated, and then it turns into a much larger project.
Well, this program is extremely specific in what you can and cannot do anyway. For instance, you, you can't even paint an area. If you replace a section of drywall because it has a hole in it and it's an air leak, it's air-sealed, but it's not painted.
So it's up to the homeowner or?
Yeah, it's up to the homeowner if they want to paint that back. That's their job. But for us, it has to be completely tied to energy in some way for that to happen, or health and safety, which, like I said, the moisture with the plumbing leak or something along those lines would fall under health and safety and would come up. But it doesn't sprawl out of control just because they think something else needs to be done because they, they all know that the state only allows for certain things to be paid for.
Does the homeowner ever have to pay anything?
No, sir.
Never? Ever pay anything back?
Not to us. For this, now, for the full rehab programs where the, where you're spending $40,000, we put a deed of trust on it, and they may be required to pay back if they sell it or transfer it or something along those lines. But for these programs, typically, you're spending probably anywhere from $2,000 to $6,000. It depends on the particular home that you're dealing with. But we're not required to put a deed of trust or anything on it, and they're not required to pay anything as part of it.
I know we discussed that churches or private organizations should contribute to, you know, to repair homes or, you know, know of individuals that should be helped. And I certainly feel that that still should remain the norm. I'm not certain why, if the private organizations or churches or, you know, can't afford to, you know, to help as much as they used to, I'm not certain why the county government should be the final, should take the grunt of that. I'm not certain why the county government needs to, to step in to solve, to solve these problems. I think it takes a lot of personal responsibility out of the individual to care for their own home, for their own property, and to, you know, it, it doesn't give them any incentive to, to try to repair things themselves. After our previous meeting where we rejected the $75,000 stimulus funds, Channel 36 did a interview with me, and I explained the reason why we rejected that. And at that point, they went out and interviewed one of the clients that was on the list, apparently, to, to receive services from this program. And what it appeared to be was a 28-year-old gentleman at home in the middle of the day that was upset that his home wasn't going to be repaired. And his statement was, well, I guess I'll have to do the repairs myself. Well, you know, I certainly think that that's what would be appropriate, and I don't think that the county government needs to step in to, to try to repair these folks' homes.
The, Kelly, does the, you know, we have contractors that have done it in the past. You're talking about we use some of our building inspectors that are, you know, doing it internally, that have general contractor license. Is there anything, you know, that, kind of, thinking about the habitat model where the person that actually is buying the home or home he's being built for has to put in their own sweat equity in as part of that? Do we have that as part of this program where people, you know, that they, they can use volunteer labor or the person, homeowner themselves can be asked to help as far as late-pride and labor, you know, or can nonprofits come in and provide the labor but get the supplies through the program?
Okay, well, first of all, with the stimulus portion, which is where we brought the contractors in.
Yeah.
Davis-Bacon laws apply. So it got very complicated. Volunteerism was not in the picture at all. And in fact, it made it even complicated to hire contractors because many of them did not pay enough to meet the Davis-Bacon standards in the first place. So that, that narrowed down some of the eligible contractors even. The other thing is, I know everybody thinks that this is picking up a caulk gun and shooting some insulation in somewhere, but it's a very, very complicated program. And my employees have been through multiple complicated classes on building science. And so.
You can't just go and just.
I'm, I'm concerned that if we start pulling in a lot of volunteers and going that route, that we may cause some problems for ourselves that we really don't want. If they're not fully educated on moisture issues, air quality issues, some of the things that we're running into now are even the off-gassing from some of the products that are used. We're starting to have to ask very detailed questions about people's health because in another location, they blew insulation in somebody's home and made them sick. So we have to be cognizant of a lot of different issues going into these homes. And the other thing is, you're going into people's homes, and you really need to be careful who you're sending in there on behalf of Cabarrus County representing us because we may, under a volunteer program, maybe not get what we want.
Okay.
You just brought up a good point. If, if we go into somebody's house and put something in there that makes the people sick, they can come back and sue the county, right?
We are having signed releases. The state's working on.
They are signing releases.
We are in the process of getting that.
But they haven't been doing that.
They haven't been doing it.
So we got, how many people we got out there now that could probably come back and sue the county?
Haven't had any complaints to me on any kind of off-gassing or sickness, but.
Well, they probably haven't found out yet in Suda County yet. After this meeting, they'll probably have a list done tomorrow. You know, personally, I, I think it's just something that the homeowner ought to do for themselves. And for some reason or another, I don't know how we got to the point where government is supposed to be everything to everybody, and nobody takes responsibility for their self. It's time that we wake up and quit doing this stuff. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I voted against it once, I'll vote against it again. I can't see doing it again.
Kelly, this, these funds aside, the previous program was ARA funds.
Correct.
Are there, but we've been doing weatherization longer than those funds.
Correct.
So were those just in addition to funds?
Yes.
And what do we see in the future, in the next fiscal year? Will there be weatherization funds available at that point in time from the usual source, I guess?
Yes. There is, we obviously don't have the numbers yet. They're still floating around, I think, between locations at the federal government. But from what I understand is the regular funding is expected to be somewhat near what it is this year. Part of that funding came from LIHEP. The past couple of years, the government has chosen to put that into the heating and air repair and replacement because it facilitated more work under ARA. Moving toward next year, more of that money will be placed back into weatherization is what I'm being told. So we may get roughly the same amount of dollars from the federal government, but we'll probably be doing a few more weatherization units than we had projected for this year. But that will not have the Davis-Bacon regulations. It will not have a lot of those regulations. But the standards for the work and the health and safety and all that will continue.
So funding in the next fiscal year, the people that are currently on the waiting list, they would still be on the waiting list? And that's how, whatever funds would be received for weatherization projects would just start at the top of the waiting list that we currently have and work its way down? Or would there be a new ranking?
There's always a new ranking the way that the system is set up. It's not first-come, first-served basis. It is a priority score, and the system ranks you based on if there's elderly folks in the home, disabled, small children, their energy usage, how much that particular household uses. It comes up with a priority score, and we work in order of that. So every day, when an application comes in, somebody can move up the list or they can move down the list. So after you've been on the list two years, you get extra points because you were on there two years, those kind of things. It shifts around, so it's constant shifting. So if somebody's on the list as of, let's just say, October 30th, that doesn't mean that they will get wiped out of the list in a year or two. It just really depends on who comes in behind them.
About how many projects have been completed this year with the standard funds that you get for weatherization? Do you know some ballpark number?
We have only completed one unit under the standard funds. We've been focusing on getting the ARA jobs wrapped up. And after we complete that, the, the original completion date was December 31st for that. The state has requested extensions as far as into September of next year. I don't know that that's realistic. I think that they may get an extension to the actual March 31st date, which is the actual closeout date for ARA, according to the federal government at this time. But we, our goal was, and it still is, because we've not been told any different, is to complete everything we can by December 31st. And then we'll come, flip over and start working harder on the regular units.
So any idea how many of those you might get done this year?
There'll be approximately 20.
Any other questions?
I've got a question.
Sure.
All of this aside, this request for $75,000 from the fund balance and the rejection of the $75,000 stimulus funds, what is the actual budget each year for this program? And how much does the county contribute? How much of the ARA funding? What is, what is the breakdown of that?
Wow. The ARA funding was a three-year funding program. It started in '09, and it was one point, right at 1.2 million.
Each year?
No, for the whole period. That was our funding.
So are you guys breaking that down for each year or you're continuing using it?
Yeah, we're continuing using off of it until we complete. The way that it was handled by finance originally, it was put in the regular annual budget rather than in a project ordinance. So in '09, there was a certain amount of money you would see used for it, and then we rolled it over to '10. And so it'll continue rolling until we, well, it'll, it'll end up this year. We won't have to roll it to the end of this year. But right now, we have approximately $200,000 left. We're having to hand the jobs out slowly now to see, make sure at the end, each one that comes back so we don't overspend at the end. So right now, I'm handing a job out, waiting for all the bills to come in, handing another job out. So things have slowed down tremendously the past few weeks as we wrap up the last, because we're going to run out of health and safety money before we run out of the rest of the money. That's just the way it's going to be. Annually, the amount we get for this program varies. For, before ARA, typically, we were doing around 40 to 45 units a year. But what has happened is they've increased the average cost per unit. It used to be $2,500. Now it's $6,000. Having said that, a unit could cost $10,000 or a unit can cost $2,000. But everything I do altogether has to average less than $6,000. And so we're getting roughly the same amount of money this coming year, but we'll be doing less units because you're doing more for each unit. Used to, we would have to cut off work because we couldn't do everything that we needed to do based on the amount that we could use. Now, most of the time, you can do about everything you need to do for each unit. So we expect to be doing around 20 a year if funding stays the same. And it was, I want to say off the top of my head, about $148,000 for this year.
And that was ARA funds?
No.
No, that was?
ARA was the 1.2 million.
Right.
The regular funding was around 148, and then we had.
And where did that come from?
That is DOE funds and LIHEP funds.
Okay. And then is there any county dollars that's put into it?
There are no county dollars directly put into it other than offsetting some labor.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Well, like I said, I want to throw some of this stuff up, but I, you know, I, I think I can count to three here, and I don't think we've got three to put it on during the new business. So probably, but I appreciate, Kelly, and I know that this is, we do have the recurring money coming in. So it's not like this is going to cut this off cold turkey. It's just that, I do, and I agree with y'all, that, that both of you, that we have got the point, and it's been a, kind of a slow fade, so to speak, over the last 40 years in our country where we do have people that stand up and think that, why can't I get, you know, all my risk, all my consequences of living eliminated by the government? And I agree with you totally on that. I just, so I think we just keep working on the funds that we get, the normal program. And, well, I guess the question I've got is, is that when somebody comes in, they qualify for the program, are they going to look at their utility bills? And then, so, so recently, this is just to reduce the energy waste, is that was it? So it's more of an environmental, let's not, let's conserve energy thing that was, they sort of helped somebody with their, because I know people can apply for emergency assistance for paying utility bills, or they can go to CCM to get assistance to pay for utility bills.
Correct.
But is that one of the things that people are trained to look at? Are some of our social workers is to see when they have a high amount of energy being used in the home?
You'll be pleased to know our social workers are very good at this. They make a lot of referrals. That is something that anytime somebody gets assistance through the energy program, they automatically send them to us to be checked whether they've ever had any work.
So they were eligible in that program to get the assistance?
Yes.
For the energy cost, too?
Yes, the, the, the energy program is actually twofold. But the energy department does take an approach. It's more of a saving energy green. They don't look at it as a social program so much. But the second part of it is that it does save money for families who are on tight budgets. And whether those are working families or whether they receive assistance or however that falls out, it, it's saving money for the government or it's saving money for a family who's stretching it.
Well, I mean, I've got two kids in college, live in a 60-year-old house, but I don't think I would ever be eligible to go and fly the program, even though probably need some more insulation or need some, I got a drafty garage door in my basement, but it's, I mean, I gotta fix it. So anyway.
What's the pleasure of the board concerning this item? Place it on the agenda to table it or what kind of a motion?
I say let's table it.
A second.
We have a motion to table in a second? Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of tabling? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed?
Yeah.
So the, the item is tabled indefinitely and tabled to next month?
It's tabled indefinitely, as far as I'm concerned.
It's tabled indefinitely for as long as, sorry.
Okay, the next item, G4. Let's see, Dennis? Jonathan? And Jeff?
Yes, Jeff Goforth, he's the chairman of the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District, is also joining me for this one. In addition, Tommy Porter is here, should you have any questions of him. This is, we're requesting authorization for the Soil and Water Conservation District to approve a grant contract with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture for $175,000. The purchase, purpose of this is that the grant is to help purchase a permanent conservation easement on a portion of the Porter's farms, which would not allow develop, future development of that. Future, for instance, residential development, continue to be used for the farm purposes. It does require this, this particular grant and an in-kind match from the county, but that's already in the soil and water budget. In addition, the landowner is providing matching funds for this. And we are also, or Soil and Water District is also applying for additional funds from the federal government, $350,000. This grant from North Carolina, agriculture development and farmland preservation, would be the matching funds for that, that grant. Combined, they would allow Mr. Porter to, by us purchasing this easement on his farm, for him to, to purchase additional farmland and to expand that operation. And again, Mr. Porter's here if you have questions specifically about the farms and the use of the funds ultimately. Mr. Goforth is here if you have questions. The Soil and Water Conservation District has recommended approval of this.
Questions?
What, what is this actually doing?
It is actually by purchasing these conservation easements and preserving the farmland, it allows them in turn to purchase additional land to expand their farm operations. That's probably the summary of the, the whole idea.
In other words, he's laying a certain amount of land aside to the county?
No, he would continue to use it. But, but right now, it is zoned. If he was not farming that property, his alternative use would be to develop that property. And although there isn't that development pressure now, that development pressure has existed and will exist again on some of our farmlands. So this conservation easement essentially removes, removes those development rights, but allows it to continue to be used in his farm use.
Forever or for a certain amount of time?
I believe it is perpetual, to stay in working lands.
Okay.
This may be something Tommy can address, I'm not sure. But I know that we had recently, a couple of months ago, we had a rezoning issue come up. And I know that there's people that bank land. And as soon as they can get the chance to develop, they develop. Does this give the buffer for y'all, for your farm?
To, to answer your question, what, what this is, my goal is to farm that land forever and my children to continue to farm that land. And what this does is it removes the development rights, and this would be perpetual, where that, that portion of the farm could never be developed for residential or commercial development. It can still be used for farm, farm purposes or farm buildings or that type of development. And this is just giving up the development rights. And the Department of Agriculture has the funds that, that compensate me for giving those up.
Okay, okay.
And then my intention would be to take that and hopefully, if the federal grant comes through, and to do a 1031 light tax exchange for additional farmland. And the way I view it, that's kind of a win-win situation. I can expand the farm and I'm keeping other land that I would purchase from future development also because it would not be my intentions to, to develop it.
How much land is this, will the easement be?
This, this easement with the state right now is for about 54 acres. If the federal part of it is approved, that will expand to, I think, about 117 acres. And, and the reason for that is just some of the wording or the stipulations that the federal has into it, that we would have to give up more land for the federal dollars to, to kick in. If the federal part is turned down, my understanding is we revert back to the 54 acres for the, for just the state part of it.
Any other comments? If you look at page 81, there is the memorandum from the Soil and Water Conservation District. And I highlighted that before you had asked the question. Minimum of 54 acres of farmland that would have a permanent preservation, conservation easement on it so that it could not be developed.
And the trust, and it's coming out of the trust fund, so it's not coming out of the general fund? So it's money that's been already set aside?
It is Agriculture Development and Preservation Trust Fund. It's reallocated yearly by the legislature. It is specifically for those, for agriculture.
Let's put on a new business.
I have a motion to put, to add this under new business. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Regional Communications Interoperability, that's a good word, of public safety agencies.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce this. I also have Sergeant Johnson, Sergeant, correct? From our sheriff's department. He is responsible for the radio system, the communication system there. Also have Mr. Randy Davis from Charlotte Mecklenburg, who is responsible for their system and ultimately, this regional system that's in place over there. So what we have before you, this has been about a year and a half process. Actually, it's probably been about a five or six-year project. When we first started, we were looking to consolidate the entire system within Cabarrus County. And after lengthy discussions, it was, it came about that it was better to keep the three systems separate at the time. So in an effort to continue to, to get some consolidation or some light equipment throughout the system, we continued to move forward. And then the opportunity came to us from the city of Charlotte through Randy and his group over there to join the regional system that is based in Charlotte. It is, it is a, our current system is sort of hanging, hanging on right now. The system, the equipment is very old and antiquated. Some of the equipment is going to be very hard to replace. So we're, we're still hanging in there. And it's operating, but we're treading some dangerous waters now. So we were looking for ways to, to do this. One was to go ahead and replace the system right now with a new P25 digital system. And that, that system is going to be somewhere between $7 to $9 million once we go down that path. So in order to push those expenses out a few more years, we talked with Randy and the group in Charlotte. And they're offering the, the opportunity for a Cabarrus Entities Group, which would be Cabarrus County, the city of Concord and the city of Kannapolis, to join efforts and join into their system. That will allow us the availability that Charlotte has been awarded grant money to enhance the regional system. And they're, they're passing that through to the Cabarrus Entities or Cabarrus County Group, approximately a million dollars, just under a million dollars.
Million and 50.
That will come in and enhance our system and also prolong the life of our current system for at least another two to three years. Therefore, that, that large capital expense that we're going to see is pushed out a minimum of two to three years. And then we'll have to, we'll still have to, to purchase that new P25 system. What are the benefits of moving on right now? It will provide a new, an enhanced system, not a new system, but an enhanced system, additional two to three years of life. Our officers and our public safety agencies will be able to move throughout Cabarrus, Mecklenburg, Union, and soon to be Gaston County or Gastonia with pretty much seamless communication problems. Why is that important? Our sheriff's department is on the road all the time transporting inmates to and from other jurisdictions. And it just gives them the ability to maintain constant communications while they're in that region. And then also, our other agencies, not just the sheriff's department, but our police, our city police and fire, our volunteer fires, our EMS department, we're always responding for mutual aid. And sometimes that's across county lines. So this will be another opportunity for those guys to be able to travel in and out of the county and the region here and still be able to communicate without much problem with their radios. The, the, also, the other benefit would be that we're looking to future grant money that's coming down, whether it's federal or state money that's being passed out through Homeland Security or other options, are typically looking more favorably towards regional-based projects. And that's exactly what this is. If we were to go out, there, there may still be some funds out there individually, but you're going to get a higher, higher report card for, I guess, for the lack of a better word, if you're participating in a regional system. So therefore, when we go to look at that purchasing that P25 system, hopefully, there'll be some grant money out there that we can participate with to reduce the cost. It's coming down to the, to the cities and the county. In fact, the city of Charlotte has already applied for one grant that may, if awarded to the city, it would also be passed down through us again for about $3.2 million in that area there, which would come close to paying for half of that new system that they were going to have to buy in a couple of years. So there's some really good benefits for us to do that. We have been, like I said, it's been about a year and a half just on this process here of working with the city of Concord and the city of Kannapolis and agreeing to, to go in together into one system. There was talk at one time that the two cities were looking to go ahead and enhance their system, but they were going to go with a different vendor and a whole different type system. So therefore, we would have not only three 911 centers in the county, we would all, we could have been actually operating with different types of equipment as well. So, so we finally came to an agreement as to, and then the, the opportunity with Charlotte came about. So once we got to that point, then we brought in our legal eagles here, Mr. Cook and the attorneys from Concord and Kannapolis. And we started talking about, you know, what does this mean? And Mr. Cook ended up drafting two agreements that we would be asking the board to approve. One other thing, before we go that little bit further, the, the future expense, by us going in together now, there is going to be an annual operating expense, which we already pay now to the city of Concord. There'll be, it'll be larger as we go into the new system, but the services and the system will be much more enhanced and, as well. So, but future costs, we're looking now as a, as a, as a joint entity of three, of the two cities in the county, we will be splitting that cost instead of one of us or all of us having to buy individual systems. And the ratio that's, that's come up based on the size of the systems would be 40% to the county, 40% to the city of Concord, and 20% to the city of Kannapolis. So as you can see, as we, as we look to the future, when we need to buy more equipment or buy this entire system, the county will be having to pay only 40% of that cost because of this, this system that we're putting in place. There, there are two, two parts of the process. One is the agreement between the entities or the Cabarrus Entities, which would, again, would be the county, Concord and Kannapolis, those three entities, and with Charlotte Mecklenburg County. And that is for us to, them allowing us to join the system, maintain, and they will maintain the system on the base system in Charlotte, and then also help maintain ours out in, in the county here as well. And then the second agreement would be actually who, how Cabarrus, Concord and Kannapolis work together. So there would be an, let me make sure I get this right. There is an intra-county, inter-local agreement, and that is with the, the cities in the county. And then there is an inter-local agreement for radio service with, with Mecklenburg County and Charlotte. So to make this thing work, both of those would have to be approved before we can move forward. But I will answer any questions at all. I guess I'll allow you guys to speak too. If you want to add anything to that, if I left anything out. Anything there?
Well, all I was going to say, the way everything is designed, it is truly a regional system. And I think y'all probably entered the agreement before my time on establishing the regional system. And what it is, the regional community, it's 11 counties, including you guys, you know, agreed several years ago to do that. And in doing so, applied for a PISIT grant, which is Public Safety Interoperable Communications. That built the regional, what's called the master site or the real brain. And the cost to that is $5 million. So what this does, if each county were to go out and build their own system, which I'm sure every county will do, and go to the new technology, which is the interoperable technology, each county would have to go build or buy its own master site. So in essence, the region spent a total of $5 million versus, you know, a futuristic $60 million. So in essence, we did a kind of a cost savings of $5 million total. And it is truly a regional master site. It is not the city of Charlotte, it's not Mecklenburg County's site, it's the regions. The only time we come into play, or where we come into play is that we were appointed the lead agency for the UAC region. So we're just acting on behalf of that. And then everything we do is passed down. And we look at the region as far as where funds might come into play and ask the entities if, you know, if they want to be a part. So that's what it's about.
Yeah, as Mr. Davis said, we, we will still continue to operate three centers here. We will, all of our information, everything will still be as is currently. However, we will also plug into that master site, which will allow us to enjoy the benefits of being as a member of that regional council as well. There will be a regional board that is set up with the inter-local agreement with Charlotte Mecklenburg and the regional system. And there would be a representative from the Cabarrus Entities on that board for future growth or future purchases. And then there will also be a local, as part of, as part of the intra-county agreement, there would be a local advisory board as well. That board is set up to, to be the, the three city managers, or the two city managers and the county manager. And then there will be an operational or a technical committee that's made up of the fire, police, fire and EMS departments that would, that would, the ones that use the system every day, that could give advice to the managers' group. And then the managers' group, which the chairmanship would, would alternate every year. And it will start with the county manager, and then it would alternate every year as each manager would have a year in leadership. And then they would be the representative to go to, to the, to the Charlotte, to the regional board and represent the, the team here in Cabarrus County. Tony, would you like to speak? If you've got anything to add to it? I know that the sheriff endorses this project. Chief Hunt's here in the audience as well, he can speak. Concord and Kannapolis will both be presenting it to their boards this month as well. If everything goes as planned, if the county and the two cities approve it this month, then we're looking somewhere February, March to actually implement the program with, with, with Mecklenburg and Charlotte. So, and then we would be up and running, so. All the funds, like I said, there isn't, there is an increase in the annual maintenance fees. However, that has been budgeted, so it would not be adding any more money to this year's budget. It is a budgeted project. And just one other thing, the county's fees actually include, that would be all of the, the county agencies as well as the volunteer agencies and the towns. It does not include Concord and Kannapolis, but it includes everybody else. We pay those maintenance fees and have, ever since the 800 system was put in place. So with that, between the three of us, we can answer any of your questions that you have?
Any questions?
Well, it sounds like a well-thought-out, organized plan. I guess it's taken time.
It's been a long time.
I've got a question, or I've got a couple of questions. If eventually, down the road, the town of Harrisburg decides to have their own police force, will they be able to join into the system, no problem?
They would be. Right now-
Or any municipality, not just Harrisburg.
They all operate under, they're, they're running through the sheriff's department now with their fire department. And of course, there's deputies working out there now. But they could, yes, they could.
Okay. And then if there ever was the chance- And then if there ever was the chance that everyone were to consolidate their 911 center to the Sheriff's Department, that won't affect anything?
No, sir. That's, that's still a possibility, yes.
That's all I got.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? We can have these as one item and do both of the agreements in one motion at our regular meeting, or they need to be separated out?
Well, it would create an anomalous situation if you voted for one and not the other. So, but probably for, for sake of clarity, it'd be better to vote on each of the two agreements separately.
Okay. And I would entertain a motion, of course, to be to place them on the agenda to, for the inter-local agreement that includes City of Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, Cabarrus County, City of Concord and City of Kannapolis. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Where have we been at? Neuer consent?
Hmm?
Neuer consent?
Does new business or consent?
Consent.
Consent. He made the motion.
Okay. I'll second that.
But under consent.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. And then the second item would be the intra-county, inter-local agreement for the regional radio system among City of Concord, City of Kannapolis and Cabarrus County.
Would that be put under consent?
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So effectively, we did approve both of them together.
I just want to make sure, Rich, if we need to have two different, if we need to vote on them separately. I understand your comment, we should vote on both of them, otherwise it shouldn't be on there to begin with, but I didn't want to, I want to make sure how you wanted it. Felt like we needed to address it.
Approving one won't do very well unless you approve both.
No problem. Okay. The next item that we have is an update on the Council for a Sustainable Local Economy, and we have Shannon Johnson here to provide that.
Good afternoon. So our county, our council just recently had a retreat to develop their strategy for 2000, 2012. And so you'll have a report there that is a highlight of what happened at that retreat. Basically, what we came to is we have a very diverse group, which is the goal, is to have a very diverse group. And so in going through the exercises of this retreat, we were able to really vet through all of the different ideas of what the council could do in the future, why it's important that they work on this now and discover it for themselves. The commissioners, you could have given them a very, you know, plain charge and have them just follow through and, and commit to that goal. But they're discovering on their own what they see as priorities in the community, and so that they can develop their own set of goals. And one of the things that's hugely important to the, to, I would say, each individual in the room, is the collaboration with other entities in the community. There are a lot of services being provided to the local small business sector at this time, but then there are gaps too. So they're examining where the gaps are, what's being provided, how it's being handled, and what this council can do to, to bring together agencies, to help other groups start programs, to fill those gaps. Just to clarify, the council's very serious about not being a service provider. They want to be able to bring services to businesses within the county, bring education to the consumers, and bring regulation suggestions to the commissioners. So, so that's where they are now. There, in the back of this report, there is a sample mission statement. They've just begun to talk about exactly what their mission is. It did take an entire day of talking about what's happening in this community and why it's important to be clear through the visioning process to get to the mission statement. It's in the blue there, Liz. So this is where they are now. And in our follow-up steps after this retreat, one of the follow-up suggestions was that a few of the members take this on, refine it a bit more, and then present it to the council for approval. So there'll be a couple minor changes, but, but that's where we stand now. We were fortunate enough to have two of our commissioners and our county manager come visit towards the end of the day to see the accomplishments of the group and to offer some very important feedback. And so the group was thrilled to have that information. So the next steps going forward will be to refine this mission, to bring a few of the key players in the group together to look through our visioning and come up with suggested goals, so that they, they'll be able to present them to the council at our regularly scheduled meeting in November for approval. And then December, we'll be able to plan what 2012, the objectives that we'll hit for 2012. So if there are any questions, I'd love to take them.
I just want to make a comment. I enjoyed coming by at the end of the meeting. It was very obvious, from everything plastered all around the room, that a lot of work had gone on that day. And I was quite impressed with the group of people that were there and the amount of time that they gave up on a Saturday to talk about our local economy and what are some things that, that we can hopefully work towards, and trying to evaluate where they felt like we were. I know that to some degree, it was kind of frustrating because we have given you an open slate to decide where you need to go, instead of us kind of mandating what we thought was important. And, and I think that's how we need to do it. We need to turn it over to the group of volunteers and, you know, let's see where they go. I think it's very important that we do support our local economy, and we need to see what we need to do to not necessarily provide funding, but to, as it says right here at the top, remove business obstacles and see what we need to do to help stimulate the economy. That's what I think is a very important role for this elected body, to see what we can do locally and help the people that are here. So hats off to you and your group. I know you worked really hard and appreciated the invite to come by in the afternoon and looking forward toward, to you guys continuing to work together and refine everything. So thank you very much. Any other commissioners with comments or questions?
Next month, we're going to be getting the presentation on the Schuman Report. So let me see all the numbers here, but-
Yes, this is a, we can, we can go into that if there are no further questions about the council itself.
Oh, okay.
But the, what I have for you today is a sample. And so I just, if I could just spend, you know, a couple of minutes running through it real quick, just so you know what you're looking at. This is a, a summary of the results, the, the entire report, a little over 30 pages of numbers. So instead of throwing those at you right away, or start with this, that way, if you have certain suggestions for, for me to give to Mr. Schuman, we can do that. What you see here is a 25% shift to local purchasing and the results of that 25% shift. The reason he chose 25% is because that shift actually creates enough jobs to have zero unemployment on the books, you know? The number's the way they are now. The reality of a 25% shift, I'm, I'm not sure we could, we could do that at this point. But this is, this is where the numbers start. You, we were, we can certainly change them to be a lesser amount, to see what those actual numbers are, but, but you can also do the math as well. The first, the chart number one is just everything that's happening in the county, wages, income, employment numbers, and taxes. Chart number two shows the impacts of 25% shift. So what you see is a direct effect, it's how many jobs are created. You see an indirect effect, which is a lot of, when you create those jobs, there's business to business, income, economic activity that's spurred. And then the induced effect, which is, you know, hiring more people to contribute to the local economy. When, when you're hiring more people and you're bringing more people into the workforce, you have more jobs that are created by their consumer habits. So in doing that, you get to chart three, and you'll see on the right-hand side, that number, 25% shift, is how many jobs are in addition to the ones that are, that are currently there. But if, not to rush you, but I want to try to skip through to the real meat of what he's provided here. And again, this is just a, a summary. When you look at chart four B, I'm sorry, four A, it starts with local food. And so you'll, you'll see some of these areas that are questionable, I would think. So I'm going to run down the questionable ones, and then if you find more that are questionable, you can ask me about those. So commercial fishing was a red flag for me, because I'm not sure how you do commercial fishing here in Cabarrus County. But actually, that covers aquaponics and aquaculture, which is something that's happening around the state, and it is something that's being entertained by several people here in Cabarrus County. And I think we might even be, you know, we've had a couple of discussions out at the farm about, you know, future of that in the greenhouse out there. So, so that is something that looks a little odd, but is an area that we could build jobs in. The real estate sector caught my eye. I wonder to myself, how do you put 147 people to work in real estate in a market where you're not really selling houses, right? So it's one of those chicken or the egg. You know, you, you probably won't get 147 people to fill that spot, but you could do things like bringing the real estate services area up to speed with the real estate transactions that go on. So what we find is that there's a lot of services that are provided through those real estate transactions that we don't have enough of here. They're really going all over the place, you know, outside of the county for that. So there, so there are ways to look at that and say, just because we are where we are in this economy, doesn't mean that's a no-go category. Another one of the other things to point out is that you'll, you won't see a category here for green technology and green jobs. They fall within the other categories, haven't been separated out as of this, you know, the way these programs work. Maybe in the next year, you would see that. So what you'll find is architectural engineering-related services has a pretty large number. A lot of that encompasses what that green industry that's growing has. Another area that I thought was interesting was travel arrangement and reservation services. So I don't know, I know one person that used to travel agent this year, last year, and that was to go on the big, huge cruise for, you know, 14 days. So I think that that's an area that, that we question, but it is a sunsetting category of industry, but it's still an industry that's there, and it's still something that we could capitalize on if we, somebody was interested in opening more of a call center-type thing there. I don't know that that category would be there in six, seven years. Something else might have replaced it by then. But right now, there still is a gap, and we, there still is business, so we could certainly help someone get started there. Chart four B at the very top, not to start a stir, but apparel and knitting mills. It's not something you would think of us needing to open or institute at this time. And that's kind of the opposite of, when you look at the travel area, sunsetting. We are actually probably going to see more of a trend to, to be, to be manufacturing textiles again, maybe not necessarily right here in Cabarrus County tomorrow. But, you know, non-durable goods that are high in weight and low in value are not going to fare well when there is the ever-increasing cost of freight and transport. So even though many of the things we wear come from China and other countries like that, when that factor, when the dollars are factored in to transport those and ship those to us, it's going to far outweigh the value that we're getting. Although we could get great value out of someone doing it here. I know many of you are familiar with Cotton of the Carolinas and how they work, 750 miles dirt to shirt. Not only is it a good product, that's a Carolina product, North Carolina product, but it's also one of the best quality t-shirts I've ever had. So I think we're going to start seeing that shift. That's why that's still there. That's why that's still a possibility to go local. We could bring several jobs here with that kind of industry. So I didn't see a whole lot more that I thought was terribly shocking, you know, needed explanation. But I'm certainly happy to have you ask any questions. Mr. Schuman wants to come with the full report in, in December and be able to, so we'll be able to provide you with that in about two weeks. So you'll have the entire time to really be able to look through that. What's going to happen with these numbers are suggestions. So not every category here is going to have a direct link to, you know, non-depository credit, intermediation, et cetera. It's not going to have a line item that says, this is how you do this. He'll look at the, the information for this area and, and look at this report in relation and come up with suggested strategies to, to capitalize on, on the data.
Yeah, that's the question I had, and maybe that's, that would be answered by him when it comes, Shannon, but for instance, on four A, where you look at, you talk about the real estate establishments, and I guess, might help me understand better the indirect and induced. The indirect are those jobs that are not directly connected to real estate, but would support the real estate industry. And there's jobs that are, you know, what happens when you have somebody whose job is created and they would support the real estate industry, but also, would they also be counted as, again, as an indirect job supporting the legal industry? You know, for instance, sites like Mailboxes or a UPS store or FedEx, you know, where, you know, words, or is that when they, doing that, or each one of these thought of independently, standalone, or, you know, you know-
So the breakdown of-
You're not going to have, no, you're not going to have a UPS store that caters just to real estate people and one that caters just to-
Right.
-legal services.
So what you'll probably see on this major breakdown, which I have a version of it in my office, but it's not the final one that he's going to provide, is you'll see much more detail about what each of these encompasses.
Okay.
So, so you'd be able to see that it's titles, services, and, you know, those types of things that really are directly related to real estate and that other type of job that might be created that does service them, but has its own primary function will be listed under it. I mean, this is a, these are models that are, you know, these are nationwide programs, but you, you cater to them. When you read the front cover, you'll notice that some of the numbers are different than what actually was printed, because the Fillmore's data was still showing up because of, you know, the way it has to pull from, can't pull from, you know, immediate numbers, it has to go just a little bit back. So he had to filter that out and factor that out to have a good reflection here, so.
Now, the question, I guess, is that, and maybe something that, if he's not going to answer, maybe that he can be prepared to answer for us, is that, you know, is it the model that he uses, is it based on that somehow the, you fall off the edge of the world when you cross the county line? Or does it take into account that we have the largest city in the Carolinas, you know, 20 miles away, and the effects of the, the bedroom spillover, that, that there's services that are provided, or things that are, employment that is created because people live in Cabarrus County but work somewhere else?
Right. I, I don't think it's directly considered, but I can't answer that 100%.
Because we're reliant, there's going to be things that we do that caters to cross the county line, that if Mecklenburg County wasn't factored in, then maybe, it would maybe a different picture.
Right. And so, so part of this shift idea is education too. So it's for people understanding that a lot of the things that they do, business to business, personally, you know, as personal consumers, make a difference, and that they can choose to do that in Cabarrus County or Mecklenburg County. I mean, you know, we're Cabarrus County and we have these boundaries, but the truth is, you know, this is a, when these programs start, when you have strategies and the council starts implementing programs, you know, it's, it's more than the county. It becomes a regional type of a feeling, you start to combine with other activities that are happening in other places, partner with economic development to, to create a sense of place, so that when companies come, they, they want to be here. They want to be here for a lot of other reasons than just tax incentives. I mean, they may get some of that, but. So, so it does have a bigger picture feel to it. As far as the numbers go, you have to have a boundary somewhere to get good numbers. So I don't know that, that it's a factor. I think in his strategy, and in the strategies that are recommended, definitely a factor. So. So one question for you, though, would, in this larger report, what, what do you think you would like to see as far as a percentage of shift to see numbers? I mean, this is the ultimate, because if- I mean, this is the ultimate because if everyone shifted their spending 25%, it'd create all these jobs. But I personally think that maybe, you know, another number would, might, a lower number, maybe, might be ideal. Any ideas?
I've always, I mean, 10%. I mean, or maybe see both, or can we do both?
Right. And we can do both.
Yeah.
We could do 10% and 25% and see. I think the strategy that we look at is going to be the same, but just for the reality of actually implementing something and having a goal, maybe. All right, we'll do, we'll do both of those. Is there anything else, other than that little bit of feedback, you'd like for me to take to Mr. Schuman for this next report?
I would just like to see some strategies. You know, you touched on, you know, perhaps, you know, the industries and what's going on here locally. But, and this might be more of a, this might be more, will come from the board rather than Mr. Schuman, but just strategies of how this board's going to tackle some of those issues of just trying to, I guess, propel some of those industries to thrive here in Cabarrus County. I guess, I guess that will come from the board. But, you know, I'm sure Mr. Schuman would, you know, weigh in on that.
His, the final report will be a combination of the strategies that come from these numbers, the data that's got, well, it's not really data, but the interview gathering of businesses. So there are about 40 different businesses and groups that he's speaking with and will continue to. And then it'll all come together with recommended strategies. They'll be presented to the board. The council will then take their goals and strategies for the next few years and combine them. Some of it will overlap. And then they'll readjust maybe the priorities. And that would be probably when the council could present to you and you could be able to say one's more of a priority than another. You know, look at the final piece and then give the feedback there.
When is the contract up with Mr. Schuman?
It's, I believe it's, the whole length is one year. But I have requested that he provide the report to me in February because that time worked out. We just accelerated things a little bit to have it work out for them. So, I didn't want it to go too far into 2012 and have the council stall. So he was agreeable that we could speed up the process.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hey, and we just got the, these reports-
Yeah.
-late this afternoon. So I'm sure that we'll have a chance to look at them individually and of course, any other questions that you have. Shannon's always available to talk to us about any ideas that we have and provide that to the council and provide more feedback. So thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is G7. And this is finance. Pam Dubois or Will Crabtree is here. I don't know if you both need to address it. Has to do with certificates of participation at Kannapolis City Schools.
Okay. I have a request for a change order or a change request for the AO Brown Project, more specifically the vocational building. We were able to complete the STEM Academy without a change order. Very proud of that. But in the context of doing that, we did use up all of our allowance within the contractor's budget. So, coming to you with this request. The request would use existing funds that we currently have budgeted within, I think asbestos removal, engineering, startup and furniture equipment, if I'm not mistaken. My goal was not to touch the contingency line item. And we were able to do that. So we have not accessed any contingency money and hopefully plan on not accessing any contingency money in this, in this project. The change order comes about through a lot of different reasons. We are renovating a 1960s building. So we did have quite a few surprises once we got inside. Had a lot of code issues that we had to address that just weren't addressed upfront, such as the walls going all the way to the deck to meet fire, fire code and various other small things. We had some issues on the outside of the building, the need to point and tuck the brick, had mortar popping loose on the outside of the building. We are, this is a career technical education building. So we do have a construction classroom in that building. We needed to add a dust collection system for that. We did not have one previously and it had really taken a toll on our HVAC system. So, that's just a quick rundown of some of the reasons and some of why I'm asking for this. Ask if there's any questions.
This is part of COPS 2009. And there's also a request to fund an additional $80,000 in IT services that will, in the interlocal agreement with us on IT services, will be working through those issues. So just wanted to point that out, but this is actually not a QSCAB project. It's a COPS 2009.
Any questions?
So if you move this funding from the COPS 2009, where is, what, where is that coming from?
It's within the funding of COPS 2009 to do the renovations of the building. He's taking it from several different line items, equipment, where he did not need as much equipment as he thought he did, I think. Thank you. Engineering with some other monies that he had and some startup monies. So he's just transferring between specific line items within the actual budget project or project budget.
The bottom line would not change.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to place this under the consent agenda?
So move.
Do I have a second? Have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, G8 is getting financed. Ms. Dubois on workers' compensation budget amendment.
Workers' compensation fund is adopted underneath the annual budget ordinance. And last fiscal year, it was that fund. I guess it's not working. Is that better? See if maybe it will. Okay. It's adopted under the annual budget process. And last fiscal year, we actually closed the workers' compensation fund. Unfortunately during, or fortunately, whichever way you want to look at it, during the audit process, when they were composing the financial statements in September, a $350,000 contribution was not made prior to us closing the workers' compensation fund. It is not any additional money to be budgeted. It was already budgeted. The transfer just wasn't physically made. So, based under the ordinance, I didn't feel I had the authority to reopen the fund. So I'm bringing this back in front of the Board of Commissioners for the fund to be reopened, to make this transfer of the $350,000 and then to reclose the fund once it's done. It's basically an accounting issue that occurred and was discovered during the audit compilation of the financial statements.
So it's not new money at all? It's just moving it, moving around again?
It was money budgeted last fiscal year that just never got transferred.
I move we place it on a consent agenda.
Okay, have a motion, a second to place this under consent. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is G9, ITS Collaborative Technology Services School Technology Funding Request. Debbie Brandon.
As you may remember, we've recently approved an interlocal agency agreement between Cabarrus County and the two school systems to work collaboratively on technology projects. And the first project that we've identified and have started on is a co-location of the data centers. This request for $115,300 is to move forward with that project for Kannapolis to be co-located in our Kannapolis data center at the Human Services Center and for Cabarrus County school systems to be located here in the governmental center in our data center here.
Any questions?
What will happen to those centers where they're currently operating, Cabarrus County Schools and the Kannapolis City?
They're not real centers. They're data closets and they don't have the services that they need for disaster recovery and availability. Whereas here, we have redundant power, the raised flooring, the electrical, the generator. It will be providing additional services to the schools. Those closets will probably remain data, network closets.
Our facility can handle that?
Yes. With virtualization, it's given us the scalability to handle additional load.
Just to give the two commissioners, we're not here previously. This has been a long road. And it started back when Cox Mill High School was being constructed and Cabarrus County Schools was requesting about $360,000 to take one of the rooms within Cox Mill High School to adapt it to be like the facility that we have downstairs. And through discussions, did not feel that that was the best use of monies. And many months later, many meetings later, with Debbie working with IT and Todd between both schools, they've come up with better solutions to consolidate services so that we use resources that we already have. Instead of putting air conditioning and the type of stuff that was needed in Cox Mill, we already had that downstairs here in our facility. And there was no need for the second payment of those type bills. So this whole involvement of this technology, and I think Ms. Poole has been a lot involved in this, too, was to help us move towards meeting the needs of Cabarrus County Schools, Kannapolis City Schools and Cabarrus County in a consolidated effort. So there is a substantial savings from what the original price tag was. But I think over the years, as we continue to go forward, we'll be able to do more things together, working together with IT, with other different jurisdictions. And I know, I believe Debbie has gone through other things with some of the other cities, discussing some of the softwares that we have and possibly sharing license and stuff. So this is just the beginning of what they've started and it's a win-win situation for the citizens to get the better IT services, but it also is saving money in the long run.
Yeah, and I think that, like you said, this is the beginning of working together. Kannapolis City Schools did not have any funds or way to be able to do this. So I know Kannapolis City Schools was very excited to have the redundancy in the backup and the disaster recovery. Cabarrus County Schools, again, had asked for the funding. That's where it came out to begin with. And this is, you know, a third of what was originally projected for it to cost. And just for clarification for anybody that would listen, our technology staff, oh goodness, comes in and out all of a sudden. Our technology staff will not have access to their data. We won't be spending our time just searching to see what either of the school system has in their data and not doing the job that we normally should be doing from our staff.
That's correct.
So the data is safe. Being in education, protecting the data is extremely important. I couldn't show any of you my data. If you happened to come by, I have great limitations on what can be seen. I'm very limited in what I can see. I can't see, Commissioner Carruth has a son in Cabarrus County Schools. I can't go and pull any of his data because he's not one of my students. So there is a lot of confidentiality involved with school systems and all the data. And our technology people are very busy on their own and have no desire to look at the data at all. And so that is not an issue between the systems. And nobody needs to be concerned about, you know, where the data is and that kind of stuff. So this is just providing them with a very good service at a much reduced cost. And my understanding from talking to technology people in both systems, they're very excited to move forward with this. Is there a motion to place this on, I would say, consent agenda? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to interject that I do think that Debbie Brandon and Todd, I know he's back here somewhere, they have worked really hard, along with the school systems, to move this forward. And Pam, I mean, there's been a lot of effort. And I, for one, appreciate the effort that both of you have put towards this.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, G10, Eagle Scout project at Mount Pleasant Library. Dana?
Eagle Scout, Ben Greason has proposed to put a flagpole up at the Mount Pleasant Library as part of his Eagle Scout project. And we support this project. And he would like to come to the November, next meeting in November to present this project to you all. He couldn't make it today. He had school.
Okay. Any comments? Do we want to put this under recognitions or under new business? Where would you, where do you think it should be?
I think you technically have to vote to allow him to do that on the property. Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to place this under new business?
So move.
Do I have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is G11, a Parks Department request for tree replacement. Ms. Strong?
Thank you. When the Monroe Gas Line project was going through Frankless Park, 81 trees were eliminated from the park. After Mr. Cook had a lot of negotiations and conversations, we were able to get $11,075 to replace the trees. And when you all accepted that, it was put into contingency. And in order for us to spend it, a budget amendment needs to put it into our budget so that we can get those trees in the ground.
I will gladly make the motion to put this on the consent agenda to approve this.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? Any comments?
If I could just, for history, this is, I mean, I've got it, been there, literally been there. I've got a t-shirt for it. So I got, there's a young man back in, a group of students back, I think, 2004, took it upon themselves to start a thing called One Tree at a Time, in which they encouraged people, they were wanting to plant some trees. And we gave them some space at the park. And then Georgia Pacific and the North Carolina Forest Reserves come forth and provided the seedlings. And if you go out Frankless Park, the right-hand side as you go into the park, there's a whole grove of trees there that they planted and have now gotten pretty good size on them. They're growing pretty fast. But it's a whole grove of oak trees and different hardwoods and stuff that were planted there. And then the gas line came along. And I was out there, I think, when they were building it and saw that they had just basically bulldozed right through the middle of that nice little forest that had been started by these kids that were doing it, you know, as a, from their own, as a volunteer project. So I'm just happy that we can do this and get this money back to replant these trees.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the next item is a piggyback bid for purchase of police interceptor vehicles. Chief Deputy Hunt is with us today.
How you doing? We have the money in the budget to purchase 10 patrol vehicles this year. I think there's $250,000 in the budget. We went out and City of Concord had already went through the bid process and got a price through Hillbush Ford. And we're just asking if we can piggyback on the back of that contract for the price.
Any questions?
What is the difference between a police interceptor vehicle and just a police car? Is it the same?
The cars, the Crown Victorias we have are police interceptor vehicles. Their suspension's built different. There's just, it's a little bit more heavy duty for the rigors of patrol. And this is the new, they've done away with the Crown Victoria, but this is the new Ford vehicle. Also, it's a V6, so we're hoping we can save some fuel with that also. Should be getting better gas mileage with these also.
So it's not the Crown Vic?
No, they quit making Crown Victorias.
Yeah, the Crown Victorias.
It's pretty much like a Taurus, just, it's a little bit better vehicle. The ones we'll get will probably be all-wheel drive.
What are they called, a Ford?
It's called a Ford Police Interceptor.
Oh, okay.
For lack of better, I mean, that's just what they're, they won't call it a Taurus. They are making the Taurus again, but they're actually calling this the Ford Police Interceptor. And that's, that's just what they're calling.
I just, I'd never heard that, so keep my eye out.
There's, in fact, it's kind of interesting. You've got the Crown Vic's, you've got Chargers and Impalas out there, all. And I think one of those things in Impalas, the front-wheel drive, that there's been problems with people when departments switch over to them because of not being used to driving a front-wheel drive car. And it handles differently. And the same thing with the Chargers, whose center of balance is higher.
All three of the automakers, myself and Dennis Far from County Garage, went out to Fleet Maintenance, Fleet Vehicle Conference. And we were able to see all three vehicles and compare and listen to what was said. And, because everybody's got new body styles. I mean, Chevrolet's come out with a rear-wheel drive car now. It's the Caprice again. But that was, this is probably going to be the best vehicle for us But that was, this is probably going to be the best, best vehicle for us because equipment we can change over from the Fords we have, that's, Ford was smart enough to, you can still use, you know, your cage and consoles from the Crown Victoria and put it right into this police interceptor vehicle. They made the room the same, they're pretty smart with that, because that, I mean, the cost of the cars are a little bit higher now, but it's a little bit cheaper for us because we can use some of that same equipment now and not have to go buy all new equipment.
I was, I'm sure, just one quick comment. I was made aware of the county last week that they are, actually, they're buying used patrol vehicles. Some of them has many as 100,000 miles on them, and putting them back into their force, and, which, I was not, I mean, I applaud that, but I would think that would be a problem.
I would think so. I wouldn't trust those vehicles very much.
Did you, did you consider the Chevrolet vote? It'll get you 31 miles down the road on its electric charge.
Yeah, but you get out there and run out of the charger, in trouble.
Yeah, you can only do 35 miles on that electric.
You can get a long drop cord.
Do we have a motion to place this item under consent?
So move.
Do we have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's see, if you will notice on the back page, we have additions that we need to add. There's another report. We also can remove the closed session for our meeting, and we, of course, have had the supplemental information provided to us tonight. And we have appointments. Do I have a motion to add those items to the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anything else that we, did I miss anything? Yeah, it takes a little thinking, I guess, to make sure we get everything on there and that Kay's happy with us, that we've approved everything on the agenda. I want to make sure Kay stays happy. Is there any, any other items that need to come before the commission today? Commissioner Caruth?
Yeah, just real quick, let y'all know that there's still work being done on trying to develop an overall, I won't say scheme, I said the wrong word, but a kind of a framework for how, how to do, manage the, the excess animal population that's created by our animal control efforts. And there's people working on that, it's getting pretty close now, but there's still some differences of opinion on how that should do, how it should be organized. But hopefully by the December, should be able to have something back here with more detailed plan. There has been a lot of detailed work that's gone into it since the last time we talked about it in defining exactly what the needs are, what needs to be done, what would, what would, what would have staff, those kind of things. So I'll bring that, that is close to being complete.
Any other comments? If not, I accept a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I do have one more thing. I know we've adjourned, but that's okay. We want to make sure we put up the happy birthday picture. Happy birthday, Mr. Burge.
Thank you, thank you very much.